Good evening, everybody. If you could please come on in and take a seat. Good news and bad news, there's plenty of seats, so you can sit down. Good news is, though, we do have a Zoom, so anybody that's out there can book it out, we can see it on Zoom. I promise you, there'll be plenty of time after our quick presentation to go over and look at and speak to all our department heads, all our directors, Waste Management, our, our department ops this year, so.
All right. Good evening. My name is Kyle Van Luster, and for those that don't know, I'm mayor here at the City of Lighthouse Point. We just had an election this year. You have, actually luckily for the taxpayers and also for those running, there were no opponents for all three positions. There were two commissioner positions that were up for grabs, which was Commissioner Marshall's position, which he ran unopposed. And also retiring Sandy Johnson's position, which came up, which is our new Commissioner, Abby Stafford, ran that position. And she also ran unopposed, along with myself. Those are four-year terms, just for everybody's heads up. In 2026, the other three spots on the commission will be up, just to give everybody a heads up on that. That is Commissioner Long, Commissioner Patrow, and Commissioner Goffey. One of the big reasons for this evening, obviously, and I know probably some of you are excited to hear about it, is the updating and informational aspect for Waste Management. We are going to go ahead and transition to automated system. And we're going to have a presentation given by Waste Management. Also going to go and delve into recycling and why it's important, cost savings that comes with the automated aspect of it. The cans that are now coming with it, so that we'll have a uniform look throughout the city. They're sturdy cans, so you'll get to hear all that information. The big thing here that I wanted everybody to take away, please feel free to come and talk to anyone in the faculty. If we miss something or something that you really are dying to ask, we are here for you. Every one of our department heads is behind you. Every one of them has a little bit of information they give to you this evening and are here to answer any questions for you. So without further ado, I'm going to go ahead and introduce our city administrator, Ross Licata. He's going to go ahead and begin the presentation. And we'll just get down to it, so unless there's anything that anybody would like to ask right away. Perfect. All right, Ross?
Thank you, Mayor. Welcome, everybody. Thank you for being here tonight. So as the mayor said, we've got a lot of important projects going on in the City of Lighthouse Point. And having you come out here is such a great opportunity to engage and connect with you, to fill you in on what's happening in our city. I think you'll find, you'll find a few things, important projects happening that are going to be of interest to all of you. Okay, I'd like to just take a minute to introduce some of our team members here. First of all, we have our Vice President, our City Commissioner, and the owner of the world famous Red Fox diner. All of you, if you guys can hear. So we've got Commissioner Evermark, who's here with us as well. Our Police Chief, Dr. Tallow. You can hold the applause for the guy. Police Chief Dr. Tallow, Fire Chief Ross the Beaches here tonight. Our City Clerk, Catherine Sims, our Assistant City Clerk. Paul Davidson, Becky Warren, our Director of Function and Recreation. Corey Olympia, who's under the Finance. Tony Palmeri, our Code Enforcement Supervisor. Jennifer Roll, Executive Services Administrator. Jim Philly, our Public Works Operations Manager. And Marissa Nick, our Public Works as well. And we had Anna Karinas and Molly Vargas from the Library. We also have Barbara Corrigan from Waste Management, who's going to be participating in our presentation tonight. And we have staff members from the Broward County Properties Foundation, who are here to answer any questions that you might have about your, your property today. We also have some impressions, so feel free to circulate and you talk to everybody. We're ready to eat or something to drink, and enjoy your evening tonight. So. Are you ready to talk? That's what I do, let me just give you a quick overview on some of the topics that we're going to be talking about tonight. We're going to be reviewing the new municipal tile waste recycling services agreement. We're going to give you an overview of our budget here in Lighthouse Point. We're going to talk about some infrastructure projects and what we're doing to find funding for those projects. We're going to talk about some new development projects along Central Highway in our city. We have a November referendum and ballot question regarding our city charter that we're briefly talking about. And then we have a couple of our directors that are going to get up and make some presentations at the, at the end of this presentation. So, as the mayor said, we have a new level of service that Waste Management is going to provide for us in City of Lighthouse Point. If you have lived in Lighthouse Point for any length of time, then you know that Waste Management has been providing outstanding level of service to Lighthouse Point residents for over 20 years. And they have been providing that solid waste and recycling services for us. We recently entered into a new agreement, which provides for a new and improved level of service, which is that new automated trash collection. So what does that mean to each of you? The new service provides for a safer, more efficient, and less repetitive way of doing collecting in our city. And that all translates to financial savings for each of our homeowners in the city. What I'd like to do now is put on a brief committed, you know, kind of introduces how the automated collection service began, what benefits it provides. Hey, great job, Barbara. Thank you. So let me just recap a couple of things that are really important, the things that you should remember. As you know, you're probably a chief of mail, everybody in this city is going to be receiving a trash container. One of those containers there. The containers that are designated to be delivered are the 96-gallon containers, the one on the right. Unless you email the city or call them, and punch it with the signs, the container that you'll be receiving is the 96-gallon container. Do not use your new parts until, we can do third. The trucks that pick up these, the auto side load trucks that are going to be coming in to do the service, but not be here until June 3rd. So continue to use your parts that you have, and starting on June 3rd, these are the only carts that are permitted to be used. The green and tan cart that you use for recycling, that the city provided to you, do not dispose of those carts. We're going to continue to use those for your recycling product. So while you have the opportunity to dispose of your old one-out garbage can, do not throw away your recycled cart, because we're going to continue to use that. And I just want to remind everybody that there are no changes to your collection services, your recycling services, or your bulk pickup. The day that you get the collection now may stay going forward. Okay, so we've given some of our residents an opportunity to either order additional parts or to change out the size of their part. As I mentioned before, the 96-gallon cart is the one that will be delivered to your home unless you request it a different size. And personally, I've been using a 96-gallon cart for 15 years or more. And never had a problem with that size of cart. As you can see from the image there, a 96-gallon cart will hold 13-gallon trash bags. So you can get a lot of trash in there. If you do find that the cart is too big and you'd like to go a smaller size, there's a 65-gallon and a 35-gallon cart that's available. It's too late to pre-order those carts now, but once we roll out the service in June, that we can turn third, sometime shortly thereafter, we can make arrangements to swap out your cart if you find that the one you have is not the right size for you. Okay, as Barbara presented the video, the placement of your carts is extremely important. They need to be at least three feet away from any of the trucks in the yard. And what I mean by that are trees, cars, mailbox. The auto side load arms in the size of these new trucks will not be able to grab your cart if it's within three feet of any of the trucks. And so make sure that you put it at the edge of the driveway, not in the street. At least three feet away from anything that you have in front of you. Okay, once the new service begins, you must use the new cart. Waste Management will not collect trash from your personally owned carts, meanwhile. So be sure to stop using those and use a new cart that you're provided with. All garbage, lucky bags, are placed inside your new cart. Any garbage that's left outside your cart will not be collected. So that's quite important. If you think that you need extra space in your cart, make sure you get the 96-gallon cart. And if you think that you produce more trash than you can get in one cart, residents have an opportunity to order a second cart. And you can actually order a third or more carts as well, but you have to pay a fee. Probably it's $90 for every cart, three or more, if you need more than two carts. But you do get up to two carts, both carts. And to dispose of your old carts, you simply laying on its side, your old pile pickup, your old pile pickup day, no, I'm going to pick up. Yeah, where did your old cart, you see on your bulk pickup deck? Well, you should wait until the weekend through third, when you get the new part. Once you get the new part, then you can do that with your. Okay, household hazardous waste, items like gasoline and batteries and tires, the propane tanks, solvents, and chemicals, motor oil, paint. These are items that you should not be putting in your regular trash for pickup. Those items need to be taken to the North Prop Off Station located at 2780 North Caroline Road in Popinale Beach. That service is free to all of our residents. The facility is open every Saturday from 9:00 a.m. until 3:00 p.m. That service has been in place in the city for a long time. That's how people get rid of their hazardous waste. So feel free to take it out there, there's no fee. But you should be disposing of that property in the appropriate way and not putting it in your trash. Okay, the mayor mentioned recycle. So with this agreement, we've been able to save our residents in, on the collection services for our regular trash. But we've got some work to do on our recycling. We've had some problems with contamination, people putting things in their recyclables that are not recyclable. And what happens is that causes that trash to be caught at the fees, recycling materials. So by far, I bet she's going to talk a little bit about what we should be putting in your recycling containers and what we shouldn't. One of the biggest offenders for contamination in recycling is plastic bags. Now, I know some people, they have a plastic bag in their house. And as you're collecting recyclables throughout the week, they put in plastic jugs, items that they want to recycle, they put in the plastic bag, and then they take that plastic bag on recycle day, they throw it in their recycling container. Well, that causes everything to be contaminated. You cannot put a plastic bag in your recycle bin. On recycle day, when you want to put your recycling materials out, just dump out the plastic bag in your recycle container and throw the plastic bag in your regular garbage. Don't put it in your recycle container. So I had the, had the opportunity to go out and visit the recycle plant in Southwest Broward County. And this image that you're going to see in the video is a conveyor belt that all the recycling materials work its way through at the plant, and you'll see from watching this video. That's the recycling material, the garbage bag. See all that plastic, finding up those, those real, that process recycling. And out of the recycling plant, they have a shutdown, it's just multiple times a day, the plastic bags are causing problems with recycling. All the small items fall through, the cardboard makes its way through the conveyor belt, and the plastic is causing that volume and causing contamination. So please, do not put plastic bags in your recycling container. Okay, to this point, thank you.
Is that recyclable?
Something.
Barbara, by far, I think she's going to talk a little bit about recycling, how to recycle right, and how we even improve on our recycling to help the decent awful residents, to help improve.
Good evening, you're in Lighthouse Point. My name is Barbara, I am proud, Barbara's the mayor, the commissioners, and Mr. Licata, we're inviting you here today. So yes, we are very excited for you starting your automated service starting June 3rd, as we can probably tell enough. I'm got a table back there for a discussion about the service becoming visited. But I wanted to take this opportunity to discuss specifically recycling in Lighthouse Point. And gentlemen say, are we really respectful in Lighthouse Point? Because I'm not sure if we're really doing it. Yes, we practically do. So W N picks up your recycle, we are your haul. But we're also your process. So that material that is picked up is taken to our processing facility in Southwest Broward, which is called Rooter, if you can recall. By the way, I want to stress that if anyone here is interested in Ford, please let me know or let one of the commissioners know, and I'll be happy to arrange a Ford for residents, so you can come and see for yourself what happens here. It's actually really, really neat to see for yourself, and you take pictures, take videos, and share it with your neighbors. So how many of you here truly suck in your home, raising hands, all of you, proud. Oh, awesome. Thank you. Thank you. So Lighthouse Point is actually one of the leaner cities in Broward County, but there's always improvement. So let's do a little, someone tells, yes? All right, so you have your cheat sheet up there, up on the screen, okay? How about this? We all ordered from Amazon or wherever. Who got this? No, okay, very good. What about this? Yeah, okay. Oh. What about this? No, okay. You know what? You know where I got this from? The floor of our recycling facility, because people put this all the time, especially around the hallway. These are called tanglers. And when Mr. Licata looked at his video, he showed you our star screens, our star screens with what moves material. This tangle. This tangles our equipment to the point that we have to stop production, we have to get a couple of workers in there, and then they come down. That takes time, effort, and it makes the profit much more costly unnecessarily. So no tangle. Including.
We're good.
Hangers, no hangers, okay? People think, well, this is metal. This is metal. Metal is recyclable. I can tell you this. No. This is not going in your recycling, okay? No hoses. What about this? This is plastic. Right? This is plastic. What about this? No. No, we get a lot of people putting, of these types, in recyclables. They're not, they're garbage. You put them in your garbage. Oh, okay. What about this? Absolutely not, okay? Any kind of film, anything that's just trash, don't use it, okay? Plastic bags? No plastic bags, no dry cleaning bags, any kind, no plastic bags of any kind, especially for the quality children. They're terrible for the machines, and they end up in the landfill. Okay? What about this? Is this recyclable? Yes, this is recyclable, okay? Absolutely. Aluminum can? Yes. This is a material that has one of the highest values. In other words, this is a material that is actually desirable. People want aluminum, aluminum tin and steel cans, like beans or, you know, dog, you said. Make sure it doesn't have any soda or stuff on the inside, right? Make sure that your bean and your soup and everything else is not in this type of can. But this is actually very valuable, okay? So if you have aluminum can, tin can, and steel, go ahead and recycle, okay? Not to steal. I'm sorry. You don't, if you want to erase it a little bit, that's fine. Just make sure it does not have any soda or any, anything on the inside, okay? Make sure it's nice and clear. What about all of the papers and stuff that you all get? Yes, we're going to be going into election season, right? We're going to be getting a lot of this stuff. All of this can go straight from your mailbox after you read it, of course. And put it straight into your recycling can, okay? So with that being said, at my table, I have these bags. And the reason I have these bags is obviously you can use it for your groceries, you can, you can all use it in your personal, okay? So this is clean and dry paper and cardboard. Yes? Okay? Plastic bottle? Yes? Okay, you're all very nice, correct? Your cans, your cans? Yeah. If we label them. No, you do not. You shouldn't take a paper label off, so you want. Yeah, branding it, but absolutely, okay? We will take, oh, this is not mine, but we will take your bags. Very good. Now, what people do, so a lot of people with the best of intentions put all of these plastic bags. And then they put their plastic bags in recycling. What you are supposed to do is everything must be clean, dry, and loose. Clean, dry, loose. So. You good? Well, as it's been thought, it's got to be clean and dry paper and cardboard, plastic bottles, aluminum, and tin cans. And that's it. When in doubt, you throw it out. When in doubt, throw it out. Your contamination level will decrease dramatically, being a faster for your neighborhood. And I am so happy to be here today. Thank you again, Mayor. Have a wonderful evening.
Thank you, Barbara. He's giving you a bag and a bunch of this trash to go home, so make sure to dispose of it wisely. Moving on for this evening, we have a presentation. And again, Barbara will be back there if you have any other further questions for her going forward. Next, moving on this evening. There you go, there's the video again. But we have the most important person in the city coming up right next is our Finance Director, Corey Olympia, and she's going to go over some of the budgetary issues that we go through and looking at how we break up some of our tax bill grades, so I'm hoping. Corey?
Good evening. I'm Corey Olympia. I'm the Finance Director of the City of Lighthouse Point. The presentation was just intended to provide a general overview of the City of Lighthouse Point budget, major components that make up the budget, the taxing authorities that are included on your annual tax bill, and to highlight the upcoming meeting date related to the fiscal year 2025 budget, if you are currently in the process of working. For the city, we have four budgeted funds. Include your general fund, which includes all the city's main operating units, including all of your administrative departments, public safety, public works, community votes, library, recreation, and tenants. Have your 2019 debt service fund, which accounts for debt service payments on the general obligation bond that were approved by the residents. These were issued in 2019 and will mature in 2048. There's a voted debt knowledge that's likely to meet the debt service requirement for this fund. You also have your garbage and trash fund, which accounts for the revenues and costs associated with the collection and disposal of your household garbage, your bulk trash, and your recycling. And you have your stormwater fund, which accounts for the storm drainage improvements remaining throughout the city. Since the fiscal year 2025 budget is still in progress, I have some slides to go over the current year's fiscal year 2024 revenue expenditures. And these are for all of the funds that I just discussed. So the pie chart on the slide represents your budgeted revenue expenditures for all the budgeted funds for the city. Your largest revenue source that we have in the city comes from taxes. It includes your agglorant taxes, your utility service taxes, and your community patient service tax. The second largest revenue source comes from your permits, your fees, and your assessments, which is followed by intergovernmental revenue, which includes the state shared revenue and grants that the city receives from various agencies. Your largest expenditure for the city is personal services, which is comprised of city department employees, since only some employees are contractors. Operating expenditure is the second largest expenditure type, followed by your capital outlay. Some details about the revenue expenditures for all of your departments are found in the budget notes that are issued each year. So just to give you an idea of our top expenditures by office in the city, this graph illustrates these city departments, and the police department is 28% of the budget. The fire department comes in second at 20%, and your trash collection comes in at 100%. For fiscal year 2024, general fund, which is the city's largest fund, this slide is just providing you with a breakdown of the revenue expenditures, again with your tax being your largest revenue source, at approximately 74%, with personnel services taking up 71% of your general fund budget. So based on the 2024. Okay, so there was supposed to be a slide about a term notice from last year. And you do receive a term notices that are mailed out each year by the Broward County Properties Bureau's Office, and list important information about your post-tax bill. They list your property values last year and property values this year, with B C P A setting the property values and applying exemptions. If you have any questions about those exemptions that you might qualify for, if there's anything that you think you're missing, they are there to answer any of those questions. They're very helpful in giving you all the examples that can fly your mind. So your term notice that you receive also details the rate being controlled by the taxing authority compared to last year's rate. And those rates are subject to change, since each taxing authority may amend or alter the proposals at the hearings, which are also listed on the so you have date, time, date of date of our account, for the city, all of them may be under some So this slide can give you a breakdown of your tax bill, which is comprised from the various taxing entities. And the largest percent of your tax bill is actually going to the school board of Broward County. So based on fiscal year 2024 mileage rate, that was 35.43% of your tax bill. The second largest is going to Broward County, and that's at 30.36% of your tax bill. The second largest is going to Broward County and that's at thirty point three six percent of your tax bill. With City of Light House Point coming next at twenty two, twenty two, one percent of your tax bill. You also have the North Broward Hospital District, seven point six six percent. The other taxing authorities, including South Florida Water Management District, the Children's Church Council, the Florida and the Navigation District. And the Zover Inlet, which make up the remaining four point three four percent of your tax bill. So sometimes when you see a huge increase, very important to look at each line item on that term notice because it's not necessarily the city. You get increases from all of the taxing authorities as well. So in addition to the military, the city also let these non-agglomorant assessments, which are comprised of the fire protection assessment, reduce the fund. The annual fire service call and does not include any other service. This for your two thousand and twenty four assessment covers forty three point three four percent of the budgeted fire service call. You also have a stormwater assessment, which induce the fund of stormwater drainage improvement problems and maintenance throughout the city. Finally, have your residential quality assessment, which is used funds for garbage and recycling, project services throughout the city and all the other expenses. So those are abbreviated annual rates that you see on your term noticing passbook here. So the city does have proposed and adopted budget documents that are available on the state website. We have an interactive digital budget book, which is in the bottom left-hand corner of the screen, industry Charlotte. You can find that or you can find the PDF version, whichever one would be easier for you to download and read, they're both available for you. From the budget books, you provide the detailed information about the revenue expenditures, along with all of the upcoming budget plans for the city. I do encourage you to check those out and read what the budget's all about. So we do have upcoming budget meetings. Most importantly, you have June twenty fifth, that's where we can do your budget workshop. We also have sensitive knowledge and assessment rates that are set at the July ninth meeting. And those are the rates that you will monitor and then the second you know that. And then there are public hearings held in September that are appealing to all the rates, but it's not agglomorant assessment. We have those on September fourth, September fourth and September eighteenth. We do have a listing of these budget meetings on the table, that's uh, financial admin table, just give you a breakdown of all these dates. We have it readily available, probably posted on the city website and advance all of you. And they encourage you to. That's your basic budget overview for the city.
Okay. Uh, I can't go without saying that we have the financial audit, which that cabinet will view our budget, our financial documents every year. And I will tell you that for all the years that Corey and he worked for the city, she and he, you see nothing but high praise and recognition from all of the very. Okay, let's talk a little bit about some infrastructure projects that are going on in your city. Okay, uh, so real quick, we're gonna go through some of these. Uh, we're going through a bridge repair schedule right now. Uh, we're talking about our bridge replacement master plan, stormwater master plan, driving, uh, FPN underground cabling project, the new street lighting program. Uh, water reuse phase five, paving, paving projects that we just recently committed. And the improvements that have been made while it's taken forty months on document. So here are a list of our bridges, the eight bridges that are currently in the repair schedule. Uh, we've received one point five seven million dollars funded by the American Rescue Plan Act to do the repair to our bridges. We have ten bridges in our city. Three of the bridges have been replaced. The other seven are coming to end of life, they're fifty five, almost seventy years old. So to get up through the period of when we can get the funding to replace our bridges, we're doing some repairs. It costs one point five seven million dollars. There was no cost to our residents for doing the repairs, it's funding that we receive from the federal government. So the two bridges on the top, both these thirty first quarter and twenty second avenue, the repairs have been completed. I know some of you have been inconvenienced from the traffic MOT with one lane being closed while they're doing some of the repairs. We're trying to get to, you know, as quickly as possible. But we still have six bridges that are under repair right now and hoping that all those repairs are done by November twenty twenty four. Uh, next, we'll talk a little bit about the bridge replacement master plan. So, as I just mentioned, three of our bridges have been replaced, but we have seven others that are coming to end of life. Uh, you'll hear from Jennifer O shortly, uh, who's working with, uh, county, state and federal partners. To try and get funding for, um, these new bridge projects. Um, anybody wanna take a guess on what it costs to design a new bridge? Probably see it on the board, anywhere from seven to eight hundred thousand dollars. Just design a bridge for our engineering firm. And to construct a new bridge, you're talking about anywhere from six to seven million dollars. And who knows what that cost is gonna be in the next ten or fifteen years, so. Uh, it's a, it's a major undertaking and we're putting a lot of resources forward to find it some county, state and federal funding to find that those projects clear. Uh, same thing with our stormwater capital improvement plan. So we have a twenty year plan, uh, to enhance the stormwater infrastructure system in our city. Uh, we hired an engineer to do an evaluation of Light House Point. And they've identified ten priority areas that need some help, um, with the drainage in the Light House Point. You could see, uh, a list on the map there. We also have some, uh, better maps if you can't make out the prior, priority areas and those locations that we're gonna be doing some engineered improvements with our stormwater management. Next, uh, we have, uh, one point two million dollar project to, um, to do some dredging in our city. Uh, the canal. The canal that you see in red there in the middle, ones that have been designated for twenty twenty four. We're waiting on, um, the army for engineers who finalize the inspection before we can actually begin the dredging project, but. Um, these are the canal with red that will be, um, undertaking the dredging hopefully in short run. Okay, uh, some of you, uh, that live in the south end of the city or, uh, been driving down an area, you know that FPN, the storm secure underground program is underway. Uh, which is a great addition for Light House Point, all of our power lines are above ground and every time it's in the storm. Uh, windy conditions, our power lines are getting knocked over and it's causing power damage. So FPN, they're at their expense is working on a project to get these power lines buried underground. Project that you see here, uh, everything's south of twenty ninth street is under construction right now. And we're hoping to complete this project by the end of twenty twenty four. We won't have full accounting and schedule of what the next phase is, but this is, uh, this is the phase that is under construction at the moment. Okay, FPN also has street lighting conversion program. Currently, we have these high pressure sodium lights. Uh, the lights that you see on the left side of the screen, this is what we have in our city today. FPN is phasing those lights out. So rather than piece meal it and just start putting one or two lights in here and there on block, protect this different lighting. Different everywhere in Light House Point, we have entered into an agreement with FPN. At their expense, they're gonna come into the city and replace approximately one hundred and seventy light fixtures in our city with these new. And improved three thousand kilowatt LED lights that you see on the inside of your screen. You can see the lighting is much improved and, um, we're looking forward to that conversion program. We expect that they're gonna make their way into the city probably sometime this summer and start that project. Okay, water reuse, uh, most of you know that we have, uh, those of you that are on the top of the water system. Uh, have an opportunity to, uh, get hooked up to the water reuse program. Uh, water reuse serves drinking water for everybody and saves water for our future generations. And also provides the pot ladies for those that are on the water system, uh, reused water system. We currently have about a thousand homeowners in our city that are scheduled for this water reuse. And those projects are currently underway in the south end of the city, south of twenty eighth street and on twenty fifth and twenty sixth street from the east side of it. Yeah.
What's that?
Sorry.
What are you talking about? Wait.
So, uh, so the water reuse is for drinking water in your yard. Water in your yard, it's not designed for water to be used in private homes. It's not drinking water, it's water designated for water in the landscaping in your yard.
So. You have to keep one of them down. Because how, how are they going to do that?
So City of Moppleby, uh, as they, I think now they do the installation and next is to clean up every home. They actually connect it to your sprinkler system at the time that they do the installation and there's no cost for the home. It, no, it's not, it's not often, city entered into the clean, City of Moppleby years ago. And this is, uh, a requirement to control water in the city.
So if you're hearing where a plane is typically, plane is typically with water.
Well, I, I would encourage you not to have your kids playing in the sprinkler system if you know that it's being, uh, sprinkled with reuse water.
What about the problem since that's giving you water?
Well, in most cases, the water that you get from the reuse system is cleaner than, uh, canal water or puddle of water that you have in your stream. So it's not that it's completely unsafe, but we don't recommend it for giving. Yep. Okay, let's talk briefly about our paving in the city. We've recently, uh, undertook a paving project, only a paving by Light House Drive and northeast thirty ninth street. It was a one point two million dollar project, again funded by the American Rescue Plan Act. And that project is ninety five percent complete, we have some minor improvements to make before the project is completed entirely. And we'll look again at other paving projects and those will be considered based on future available funding. Okay, everybody recognize the picture on the bottom of your screen here. Uh, most of us probably throw by the lift station in forty one hundred block of Light House Drive on your way to the meeting, but I, I know I did. And, uh, as important as this lift station is, it's an isolated firm. So Broward County is in the process of fielding and landscaping that. You can see the two pictures on the top of the screen, that's what it's gonna look like when the project is complete. We expect that they should start that project, the next month or two. So it's gonna be a nice addition to the neighborhood. So it's an important function to have that lift station for the one, for residents that live in the area, for those that drive by it. Okay, at this point, I'm gonna invite Jennifer off, if you're gonna talk a little bit about our. Funding practices, I will pay for these things, but.
Oh, that's a good question, how are we gonna pay for our infrastructure projects? In late twenty twenty two, your mayor, the state commissioner, receiving for the whole audience, representing the city at these local, state and federal level. Um, your elected officials prepared a legislative agenda to identify the city's funding priorities for the twenty twenty three session. And their efforts paid off. Twenty twenty three will turn out to be a record year for the city, because all of three million dollars will secure the three design projects and two construction projects. During the twenty twenty four session, the city submitted requests for two projects, which are on the governor's desk to be final approval right now. We hope to have an update on those projects at any time. Uh, for the, also for twenty twenty four, we've submitted for some tax funding requests. There is a design project already underway and we have some construction projects that are currently under review. We should have an update on those projects sometime in July. So rest assured that your elected officials have made it a priority to update the city's infrastructure. And we will continue to identify funding opportunities at all levels to do so. So that's all I have, I'm gonna pass this back over to Mr. LaPata and he's gonna review some ongoing development projects. So, yeah, probably since last time you all did it. This is a city that has taken some of the money, it's a moment we know what our forces do. Like suddenly.
So that's, that's something, one thing we already got was very less than five times. Yes, it was much.
Two, four, one million grand. It's unfortunate that it's maybe.
Yeah, yeah, each grant is, each grant is different, so, and it depends also if you become more attractive, I'll say that like that. I've become more attractive by the more skin basically, or the more money the city puts in. So every time that we go for a grant or grant funding and they're all different ways, it's kind of mind blowing, just to think that just because it comes from the county or the state or the fed. If they'd all be under the same umbrella of bridges, right, or whatever. Now, there's this program and that program, there's each one of them has their own different qualification. With that, we would then have to match, we control, we basically put that up, so we know if we're asking for the million dollars. We knew that we were gonna put in between two hundred and fifty, three hundred thousand dollars. So that's how we budgeted for it.
You're talking from the beginning, you get to the budget process, that one at a gate, you say, we know we wanna buy for X amount of grants. And we know that our secret value is two hundred thousand.
Yeah, correct.
So right away, what?
So we, we, we obviously pushing our budget right off, right away. Unfortunately, when our process works, just in the grand scheme of things, we don't know specifically like on our preparation this year. We don't know if the governor can be, so, so, June thirty first, June thirty third. Oh, so on June thirtieth is the only time, by then our budget action already has to be set. So our goal is obviously, made so far, and we just roll the house, all these preparation committees. We've worked our way up in town, the commissioners have gone up to town, I've self gone to town, our lobbyists have worked. We hope that it can, will survive the governor's pen, right? proverbial the pen is mighty as a sword, I wish that wasn't true, but ultimately, again, that's what we do. So we will be budgeting for what we put in this year, uh, with the hope, because we've already made it, passed all these preparations. The senate and the house decided into, basically the law, to budget the law. And as long as the governor doesn't go down, but the pen, you need to go any of those, any of the projects, we will get that money and we will be budgeting for that.
So that meeting is July ninth, we had our first meeting with all that. That would be the meeting that you were in the house.
Yeah. Perfect.
That would be the meeting that ends September. Starting September.
Well, yeah, I mean, they're going over the military rate. How we're gonna fund that.
Hey, Jennifer, thank you very much. So just keep in mind, in the last, uh, five years or so, elected officials and city staff have brought in nearly ten million dollars. On the state and federal funding to help fund all these projects that you see going on in the city. Uh, imagine what your tax rate would be if we had it there for that locally here in Light House Point. So, uh, who knows for our elected officials, Jennifer, and looking, working with state county and federal official. Okay, I can talk a little bit about some new development, new and improved development projects in Light House Point. First one up, uh, Broward County Health ER, I mean, if you knew that Broward Health ER was coming to town. So they have, uh, a tenant standalone outpatient emergency room facility plan with a second floor office space. At fifty three sixty North Federal Highway, the old Crown of Good location, you probably see them down on their property. Broward Health ER is gonna be, um, they're going through the review process right now and scheduled for planning and zoning on the platform next again. Next, we have, uh, Chaos Fishing Rod and Wheels, they're company, west side of Federal Highway. They're moving into, uh, that property next to Kathy Bar on North Federal Highway. And they're in the process of resubmiting their plans and pending route for the approval. Um, Papa Gout's, they got additions at forty four ninety on Federal Highway, they're on the planning and zoning site plan review. They've been through a, um, design and review, um, process and they're hoping to get underway as soon as the review process is done, complete. They are done, most of you know that, uh, you've seen they're done, they're under construction, they're also adding, uh, in addition and remodeling their facility, um. You're likely to restore with a new show that's going in at forty-two nineteen, North Federal Highway. Uh, this is the Takai Town Hall project at thirty-eight sixty-one Northeast Twenty-third Avenue. The permits have been issued for this project, just waiting for them to come back and get their project underway. It's for twenty twelve town hall, uh, between twenty-seven hundred and thirty-two hundred square feet. This is that corner of Lighthouse Drive and Northeast Thirty-Ninth Street with a whole private bunch of people up here. And we have, uh, Lighthouse Point Yacht Club. Uh, there's been a lot of talk about the yacht club over the recent years, uh. They just recently, uh, were approved for their city permits. This is a twenty-one town hall project with one single family home, a clubhouse, and a beach grove. So we're just, uh, this project is pending a developer agreement, Broward County approval. And, uh, we're hopeful that, uh, this project is gonna get underway soon as I may. And, uh, finally, we have our library youth wing next to City Hall. And they've been working on this for the last year and we expect it to be completed sometime in July, twenty twenty-four. So we'll be able to get, uh, get our kids in there and talk some good programs. Okay.
All right, uh, just in case anybody didn't know, we had a. Just over two years ago, our mayor did not pass away, unfortunately, uh, due to an illness. Uh, with that, it caused some issues on the fact that we utilized a charter. That had been written by our founding fathers when the city was founded. With that being stated, uh, the goal was that we needed to go ahead and update the charter. And make sure that obviously it puts its days time, wording, qualifications. But also if this situation occurred in the future or other situations that the language would be cleared up. A charter review committee was started, uh, there were the commissioners on it, there was local business book. Uh, we had city staff on it. Uh, the goal was over the last, over a year. To put together, uh, what they would recommend that we would update on our city charter. Out of what they came up with was seven different, uh, changes. Those seven different changes, because it's in our charter, will need to be voted. The November election, actually tomorrow night's commission meeting will be voting on the actual wording that will be seen on the ballot. But in the November general election, you will see seven ballot issues specifically toward our charter. Those charter amendments are what the charter review committee recommended. The city modify their charter to move forward and also bring it into the twenty-first century. Uh, with that, just if you have any questions, we have it over there at the city's clerk's desk. You can look through them, but, uh, again, you had some great folks on here. I know some of the folks that are here actually served on the board. It's a great opportunity, but, uh, I tell you, it took over a year for them to come up exactly how they think. Uh, each aspect of the city charter should go moving forward, uh, into the twenty-first century.
Thank you, Mayor. And at this time, uh, we're gonna do some, uh, department director update. I'd like to invite, uh, our park's recreation director, if you'd like to come up and. A little presentation about what's going on there on our recreation.
Good evening, everyone. It's so good to see you guys here in this beautiful Johnsonville Community Center. As you've seen, we have a lot here, a lot is live here, play here. As you came into the park around, we saw a lot of fun in the next city. We have pickleball courts, obviously lots of sports, but there's something decent we have going on in the building and other parts of the city that I want to see over. First off, if you wanna get a picture of this to your camera, these are all the sets that we have going on. For this upcoming new year, October fifth, we're starting off our new year. October fifth, we're starting off the Zach Run Experience Camp. That concert will be held over at Frank McDonald Park. October twenty-fourth, we will have our Halloween at the Horn, our annual event, a great tradition that we have in the city. November fifteenth, movie in the park. December fourth, White House of Love. December fifteenth, Santa Around the Point, and January thirty-first through February, the second, Zach Run, Super Day weekend, which is a great event. All the rest is to enjoy. Uh, just to let you know, we also have programs here that has to do with not just the kids, we have adolescents all the way to adults. We have adult kids on some week that is starting right now, registration is open. If you see the QR code in the corner, that takes you to our L H B rec desk, which is our online programming. Signing up and registering for any of our programs that you see here. I will have, uh, pamphlets as well in the back and let you know instructions on how to sign up and everything that we have going through. We have new stock, uh, all the registrations opening up next week. Weekly activities that we have here in these rooms, we have adult yoga, zumba, art classes, and pickleball classes. We will have an upcoming teen safe driving class here May twenty-third. Parent and child football tournament, June fourteenth. And a voter safety course on June fifteenth, which is a great way for our kids, especially, um, those who are interested in learning how to write a vote safely. They will earn their voter certificate and, um, it's an all-day, uh, course. On the screen, EKG screening back in August twenty-fourth. For kids of the age twenty-one here in the fall, get them ready and make sure that they're safe to, um, participate in sports. And just also let you know. Facilities that we have, um, are looking for rentals. As a resident, you get a special rate. One that we have open at the tennis center, it's over here, um, on the bottom middle, that's our actual pavilion, it's two hundred and fourteen dollars for four hours. At Chongqing Dell Community Center, we have a multiple purpose from A and B, it's closed this off if you just wanna have that activity here. Have the building or the whole entire room, there is a two hundred and thirty something dollars for four hour rental or for the whole room itself, it's four hundred and seventy-five dollars. And we also have. Which is back right behind the carry, urge you to go through, because we have our concession stand that's open tonight with lots of yummy ice cream stairs for sale. And you can use the patio with the pitcher for one hundred dollars for four hour rent. And any of the park pavilions you see that are just the picnic tables with covered pavilions, those are eighty dollars for four hour rent. So just don't forget now that they're available and you just sign up again with our, um, rec party and residents will help you out. Can you see me in the back? If there is anything in the way, can you do it? Okay, as far as they know, we have never had anyone's vote, as long as you're using the side of the right of the way, this is on some private property in a driveway. Um, you have a unique situation with, uh, the residents of the north end. Um, as long as you don't walk from driveway, we can also along the right side all the way around the street right away. So yes, I know that that could be a two, usually as between the five thirty and seven o'clock time that it does get very. But other times, please come and enjoy me.
Okay, thank you, Becky. Okay, next up, I'd like to, uh, find a fire chief hub and talk a little bit about things that are going on over here in Puy.
Thank you, Ross. Good evening, it's nine. First of all, I'd like to congratulate everybody for making it to the high right of the evening, raise your hand if this is where you can't hear. Um, you know, on the first day here, we are really proud in the city and especially happy and proud that we've got the new fire station here. The last one lasted about seven years. And Mayor, we're gonna need a new one in about seventy-five, if that's okay. But that's something that we're proud of in the city and that we're making good use of it as fire, so, um, that's our name home. You know, can you go back one, just wanna emphasize what we call it, excellence in service was, that's what we spread for Lighthouse Point, you know. Mayor Van Wester talked all about, all the time about Lighthouse Point, it's certain feeling that you get in your here small town. Community and service is related to that. There's something that we're proud of in the fire service. That's something he holds accountable for, so, um, and that's just on people, I think that's big. I think that's what we come to expect in the day Lighthouse Point, that's what he's brought for, and fire probably every day, and that's stuff that we do for you guys in the city. Uh, who we are, twenty-six full-time, well, if you count me, it was only twenty-five. Who we are full of staff. Full-time cross-frame firefighter paramedics, that means we're there to take care of any emergency you have at your house, whether it's gonna be a medical or a fire emergency. Now, we've heard it tonight, Robert, when in doubt, go without, I'll say this, when in doubt, call your fire department. We're here to help, no matter, no matter what it is, so, um, twenty-six strong, fire team, assistant fire team. Someone along the back there along with him, three captains, six driver engineers. Three rescue keepers, they've been qualified firefighters, paramedics, that's the entire. Uh, Lighthouse Point Fire Rescue Crew, we're, we're very proud of what we're able to accomplish through the number of people that we have, but we can't get those things done without the two thousand service level. At the firefighter staff, some, maybe we're. We're graduating a captain, can I say that, we're retiring a captain after forty years of service, that lets you know the level of service that the department has after forty years, you're deciding to move on and. And we put on a captain's test today and, and we did interviews today to replace them and, and start the official cycle, so that's who we are and, um. And, uh, we're proud, proud providers of the service for the city of Lighthouse Point. Uh, a little about, about the products that we. The service that we provide, a thousand calls a year. That's been holding steady for, for a while now, eighty-five, you know, the traditional eighty-five percent D M S split and fifteen percent fire. And about nine hundred hospital transport usually, about half of the calls that we have in my. That's, uh, results in a transport to the hospital. So, uh, again, we'll, we'll just take the stance that if you have any concerns with all that's going on at your house, or if you're fire, something you deal with on stage. Or you're having a medical emergency, call us early, that's something that's very important, we need to get there early and take care of you. And, and really is, I, I've used it as a joke earlier, when in doubt. Give us the call, and that's really a point that I want everybody to hear and make sure that they take on a member with. You're in doubt, need help, something's going on at your house, and you're not cured, should I call, or wait on the call? We're here for you, and we'll come out and take care of it. And things we do besides that all-service, all-hazard approach, which is something that we're proud of, all hazards approach, whether or not it's going on with you, what's going on in their property. When, uh, your hurricane, some other things we do is, is some grant writing. You know, one of the things the, the mayor hopes is accountable for is keeping the pressure and the stress off, grab worms, you know, something he told us all the time, that's why we. Even aggressively after the state funding is keep the, keep the pressure off, that's what I'm talking, that's why we're heavily involved in writing grants. Uh, we do all the city life fire, life safety inspections, about six hundred of them every year. And we provide various forms of public education to the public, including CPR, and we do classes, you know, one of the initiatives Mayor had was. He wanted, he had a vision and wanted a, a safer. Um, city that can react quicker to medical emergencies, every employee of the city of Lighthouse Point, CPR, A C certified, that's important. He told me to go make it happen and I was very, very happy to do that, but I think we'll be considerably safer now if we can start that copy later earlier. Know the great days, we do some card seat installations at the fire department and we did some school, started off on the fire. And a little bit about the resources we use to accomplish all that, we have, uh, engine twenty-two. Ladder twenty-two, any better. Uh, that's how we provide those two thousand calls a year, and this is, uh, actually the newest member of, of the fleet. Really happy to get that, the old one, we, uh, just. He there to get a drop after we, that we cut out of that and we get time to, uh, kind of retire that and get to. That's sort of where we go. Uh, two of the, two of the teams of Lighthouse Point. So that's the highlight of tonight, I, um, I finished, but I will take, but your sir. He has one, he had an emergency in my car and. He can do the nine-one-one, nine-one-one, yep. That's something I say, call me at work, nine-one-one. Use that number. Somebody else? Anything here tonight that you're, please, please talk. And I would appreciate it, thank you, gentlemen, for the people who are great, thanks for this part. Let's invite up our police chief, Jack Carrow.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Jack Carrow, you're police chief. Welcome, thank you for allowing me to stop at this people, calling you tonight for a few moments about, uh, your police department. You're gonna handle that?
Sure.
Perfect. So I'm very happy to announce that we continue to have one of the lowest crime rates in South Florida here in my. And I contribute that to the hard work, the men and women of the police department. They're out there day and night, making sure we do remain safe and city in South Florida. In addition to that, we also incorporated a lot of technology to our crime. Those of you don't know, we have forty-four license plate reader cameras. At every entrance and exit of our city. In addition to that, we have over a hundred cameras throughout our city facilities and our city park. That live stream right into our dispatch center here at Lighthouse Point and our police department. And with that, I'd like to thank our mayor, our elected officials for their continued support. Making sure we have the tools, the equipment we need to keep all of you safe. As we all know, technology is expensive, software is expensive, so in addition to. Incorporated some of that in our budget, we're also out there getting grants, a lot of equipment, which we'll talk about. But elected officials, thank you. I appreciate your support. Also, in the past six months, I have to note that our crime rate has gone down two to four. And I contribute that to many, many felony arrests that we made towards the end of last year. I'm not sure if you remember seeing our message boards and somewhere in nickel alerts, which we'll talk about in a few minutes. About bulk car thefts and auto theft, locked vehicles, removed K P O. Well, we had an uptick in auto thefts and bulk car thefts towards the middle of last summer and fall. But we made many arrests towards the end of the year. Our detectives, our officers went to work. Not only did we bring down a large organized group that was working the day county, Broward, and Palm Beach. We brought down the actual, uh, ring unit. We saw crimes from day counting, Broward, Palm Beach. And I have the very happy report, our crime is way down the past six months. I contributed to these arrests we made. Every one of these individuals who were arrested had extensive criminal history. In fact, two of them had just recently been released from state prison for stealing cars and cash. In fact, one of them, we arrested, and he spent ten years in state prison, got out within a few weeks, we arrested. So it is out there, we are asking, please, help your neighbor. Help your friends, lock their vehicle. Remove valuable, remove the K P O. Every nearly, I think it was one, that wasn't, nearly every vehicle stolen last year unlocked. And K P O left. So if we can get all the residents, all of our guests, to lock their vehicle, remove K P O. Will be the safer city, not in Florida, not the whole country. So please help us to spread the word, lock the vehicle. And also wanted to share with everyone, we now have the capability of crime mapping. And if you now engage the police department's website, there's an actual link. It'll take you to a map, a Google map, and you'll see all the different icons. And they all mean something different, and if you hover over and click on each one, the information box will pop up. And it'll actually be a description of what occurred, ours to be a public. Unlocked vehicle broken into. So if you have anything on our website, please navigate there and there's a large link, it'll take you right to our crime mapping. And it's updated almost daily, so it's real updated information. So if you're curious what happened in your neighborhood, please visit us. And I definitely wanna showcase our new police boat. Last year, um, with our elected official approval, we moved forward to purchasing a brand-new police boat. You haven't seen it, there's a picture of it, it turned out fantastic and is perfect for our warranty. But best part. We won a whole group of officers that are police department. Led the effort on this and we wound up receiving a grant for seventy-five thousand dollars in state of Florida. We received a very generous donation of fifty-five thousand from the J C Addison Foundation of Broward. Great supporter of ours, he helped to buy a pickup truck in the past, equipment for the fire department, fantastic foundation. Great supporter of ours, he helped us buy a pickup truck in the past, equipment for the fire department, fantastic foundation. And we also received the twenty seven thousand traded for a whole police vessel, which was two thousand and two in traffic. Nine boat served us well for over twenty years, but we got every drop out of it because. It was time to move on to the new police vessel and it's like deal for our community. So for a net cost of a little over seven thousand dollars, that's our new police boat here in Lighthouse. Sure, there. No one's perfect for us. It's ideal for our work. Who here knows about Nixon? Good, good job, good job. We had approximately sixty seven hundred registered users, but that is fantastic. But I want to see that number higher. So please stop by our table when we finish with all of our department head announcements and we'll get you signed up. You can choose to receive a text or an email, and this is how we communicate with the community. This is how we push out vital information of emergencies. If there's a crime trend, we'll push it out. Because there's road closures, we're going to push it out. We're going in a hurricane season, we'll be pushing out weather alerts. So if you're not signed up, please see us and we'll get you signed up. The fantastic tool and our goal of the police department, build our reach of many residents during emergencies we can, and this is how we do it. Hurricane season, it kind of works with Nixon. We're uh going a few weeks away from hurricane season, we're making our plans, police department, fire department, all the cities are making our plan hurricane season. Please make sure you have a plan. Just make sure we have the resources here. If you want to take a photo of it with your phone, please make sure you have a plan for your household. Whether it's where you're going to flee to, whether it's going to be the food and water you have, batteries. So please make sure it's a good time to uh sit down with building members and review your hurricane operation plan. And before I finish and turn that over to the mayor, Matt Massey, do you stand up for me? Those of you who don't know, this past Tuesday, Matt held a fundraiser along with other. Group for the uh police department and our volunteers at Bone Fish Mac for tip a cop. And it's the benefit of Special Olympics of Broward County. Well, Matt outdid himself this year. And last year, in two thousand twenty three, Matt raised about seventeen thousand dollars in one evening for this group. This past Tuesday, he raised approximately twenty seven thousand. I was holding out for the community for a while, but you know, so happy and proud of my staff, all of our police volunteers. Our off duty post now at the police department showed up and it was truly a great event. Our elected officials showed up. And we really had a great time. We do it every year, we push out information. So if you didn't join us past year, join us next year. And it's a great part. We have thirty three full time officers and we have three in part time. And I'd love to chat with each one of you, if you want to stop by our table. You can ask uh individual questions, if you have any questions about the police department or anything I spoke about. Thank you so much, everyone.
Well, that was a quick twenty minute presentation. I'm glad that everybody stayed with it, so. First and foremost, I just want to thank everybody that came out. Unfortunately, I'll be very honest. It, there is a lot of time and effort that goes into putting together the presentation, making sure the information is out there. The department heads all have things going on and they also have a commission meeting tomorrow night, commissioners taking the time and effort to come out. What I'm going to ask of you is just one thing, pretty simple, I guess. This is the second one of these, you know, there was a yearning for this. It's Johnsonville Community Center is an amazing opportunity. To not be in a commission setting, so I'll call it a little more lax. Get to talk to residents, also get to talk one on one with our department heads. I need your help. Because here's the problem, this effort for twenty six, unfortunately, is tough. So I'm asking you, what do we have to do to get more residents to show up at these types of events? You know, I know, I, trust me, I feel the same way. I'm thinking of something, I put up signs, we put it on Facebook, we put it on Nextdoor, we do all this other stuff. I mean, outside of doing door to door, having Suzanne over there at Real Dance yelling screamed at everybody as they. I have no other way and I want, and I'm asking you folks, the reason why, because you are the ones that showed up today, which I do appreciate. Please help, help us so that when we put this together next time, this is a pact. That they understand how important all these things are. I know it sounds monotonous. But the amount of time and effort that goes into finding grants, finding good police officers, finding good firefighters. City work employees going out and doing things constantly. There is just a lot of effort out there. You know, we want to show you everything that we have accomplished. And when I mean we, the city of Lighthouse Point is a family. Right? And specifically going just to our employees. We have a hundred and fourteen employees, give or take, depending on retirements and moving in and out. But ultimately, and each one of them puts their heart and soul, just like Matt back there, just like everybody that came up here this evening. Just like our city administrator who works tirelessly. And make sure that we're doing the right thing, we're preparing for the future, that we have long term plans that we've never had before. We've had more meetings in the first six months, well, not even completed yet, before the first six months of this year's meeting. We'll have more meetings than we've had in previous complete years. So your commissioners, your city staff, all our city employers are working hard and we want to showcase. So if you got an idea for me, shoot me an email, tell me, let me know if I got to be learn how to do smoke signals, I'll do whatever it takes. But I want people to recognize what your city staff and your city employees are doing for you. And how we're preparing, not only for today, not only for next year or next week or next month. Or not ten years from now, that we're preparing for thirty and fifty years down the road. So our families and your families, grandkids and great grandkids continuously enjoy the Lighthouse Point that I didn't follow this one. So thank you very much. You can ask all the questions you want. Suzanne, please be more than happy to go back there, not just giving today in our time. If go back there, talk to anybody, get information. There are some cool magnets. That was a request from the last time we just gave out magnets. So we do back, have back the magnets with all the city numbers on it. I swear anybody's going to want to put them in the fridge, but hey. It was a request and we listened. So yes, Mr. Terry.
And the good job that you're doing, that you don't have a pack out to the quick people, really angry and upset that they can't wait to come down and storm the place. So I do think that, and I mean it's true, I mean, if people are relatively, I mean, it is a little early, I was expecting my husband to go to garbage school time. So he knows how to throw up garbage. But, but it's true, I think that people, yeah, there's always something that someone wants to say, but most, but I think people are really. At least the people that I told about it, like, oh, we're good, like, you know, okay, so if you're doing a good job.
That is it. You were just saying tiny, like earlier or later? Okay. All right, well, if that, yes, sir. I tried to stay out of the controversy, I just worry about a hundred and fourteen employees and our two point. Final square miles for the city, but yeah, anything else? All right, do me a favor, make sure you eat all the cookies that I got over there, because if not, I don't want to have to give them to uh Matt Massey. Thank you both.